All right, the time is now six fifteen. I'll call our regular board meeting to order. Tracy has taken roll call and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so next up is item three, which is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. If there is no changes, I'll take a request to move to approve the agenda as written. Moved by Trustee Hayes, second by Vice Chair of Garris. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the minutes to the special board meeting on October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by Vice Chair of Garris. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor of approving the special board meeting minutes, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of October twenty-second. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as written? Moved by Vice, moved by Trustee Walsh, second by Vice Chair Wa, Vice Chair of Garris. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor of approving the regular board meeting minutes, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is our community connection. I'll go ahead and turn it over to you Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. It's not very often that you get to shake the hand of national champions like I did tonight, but it is my pleasure to introduce our team from our Missoula FFA chapter. They bested forty-five other state-winning chapters to earn this national title in veterinary science. The team members tonight here are Mary Kate Nagel and Colin Yoshimura, and, but they were also teammates with Ivory West and Kenzie Clark, and they are coached by the staff at the Bo Ag Center, including Tom Andries and Kristy Rothie, who is with us tonight. So we're excited to have them, and they're going to share a little bit about how they became national champions. So you're welcome to come up to the table there and share with us.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know it did that. Okay, so, whoa. We went to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. We were there alongside eighty other, eighty thousand other FFA members from across all fifty states, including three territories. For our team, with our four members, we all individually placed top twenty, and we were the only team in the nation to have all four individuals placing in the gold level. As a, me, well, me personally, I got fifth individually in the nation, and Kenzie Clark got fourth individually, and our team, as was said earlier, won Nationals entirely. This was one of the hardest contests. We were alongside the top teams from all over the United States. It's one of the best contests you're ever gonna see. It's staffed by maybe fifty people. It's so closely monitored, so no one's cheating. It's one of the most fun things and once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
This has been really great for our future goals, as all four of us plan on going into the veterinary field after we graduate. So we all plan on going to vet school, and then majority of us plan on going into large animal, but there's also some variety there, and this has already landed us multiple job opportunities, as me and Colin both had one of our judges give us job offers at the convention. So this has been really great for our next endeavors, and we greatly appreciate you guys' support for the FFA chapter and the Ag Center. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hang on just a second. I wanna see if we have any questions from our trustees.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
So are you planning, both of you, to be veterinarians or something entirely different?
Um, yeah, so I plan on being a veterinarian for large animals and small animals, so focusing on your more domestic animals like cats and dogs, but I've also grown to love agriculture, so I think I wanna stick with some sheep and swine as well.
I also agree. My main plan is to be in the large animal field with a slight focus on small animal, but just in general staying with those larger animals.
Vice Chair of Garris?
Where do you hope to go to veterinary school at?
For me, my plan is to go to Auburn University. Both my parents are alumni there, so.
So I plan on staying here in Montana for my generals, and then I also got into a private school in Iowa that teaches veterinary science, so I'll probably end up going up to Iowa to finish out my veterinary science degree.
All right, well, thank you both for coming and sharing about your national championship tonight. Great job. Yep.
All right, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to item six, which is public comment. In the public comment portion of the meeting, it says aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response. Do not infringe on, right, a privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes are personally directed to an individual. Any public comment? None. All right, moving on to number seven is our student trustee reports, and first up is Big Sky High School.
Hi, everyone. How are you guys doing? Again, my name is Aspen Grenier, and today I am joined by Silas Jones, and today we're just gonna be giving you guys an interview, overview of everything that has kinda gone on in the last month at our school. To start is we hold, we held our first-ever mock election at our school on November fifth. We had three hundred and eighty-five students vote, either in person or absentee. We offered both ways, and it was a very successful event to help the students understand the process of registering to vote and the voting process. And then today at our school, we hosted grade-level assemblies, which was a way to bring our classes together and discuss how things were going with the cell phone policies, and then expectations with sportsmanship, going into winter sports, and then the goals throughout the next couple of months. Along with that, we are hosting an annual Giving Tree coming up. We are asking Big Sky families that can take another family in to like help and provide for them, and we are doing this through the FRC to adopt a family and purchase those gifts for that family. And then lastly, for our overview, our, we hosted our second annual trick-or-treat on October thirtieth, which we had a hundred and fifty kids younger than ten come and get candy throughout the building, and we had tables including the sports and activities and like classes do that, and then Silas will take over sports.
Howdy. This is athletics and activities. Our varsity football had an incredible season going seven and four. This year, the team won the first playoff game in ten years since two thousand and fourteen. Along with that, our JV team went undefeated for the second year in a row. Our golf, soccer, and volleyball teams also had an excellent seasons that we're very, that we are very proud of. Our theater department had their first product, performance, which went incredibly well. They had a great turnout, and it was a good play.
All right, next up is Helgate High School.
All right, hi, everyone. My name's Faith. I'm the student body president at Helgate. I'm here with Stella, our senior class president, and we're just gonna be going on and off for each subject. So first off with academics, we had the PSAT with juniors and sophomores who registered that went off without a hitch, and we also finished up AP as well as IB registration.
Next, we're gonna be talking about our sports, and just overall, in general, we had an amazing fall sports season. This week, our girls volleyball is headed to state in Bozeman, which is a really large like accomplishment for them and just very exciting in general. And then also, our soccer season went really well with our boys making it to semifinals, and then our girls making it into quarterfinals.
For the arts, we also had our first theater production with Dracula. That was a huge hit. And then our orchestra and band are also preparing for the next concert in the holiday
Student government-wise, um, we are beginning to work on a new library program to encourage reading over breaks, and we hope to continue this not only over Thanksgiving break, but also over winter, and hopefully continue it throughout the summer as well. We are putting together a list of names of kids who check out books, and then they'll be entered in a raffle in hopes to encourage, hopefully, less screen time and just more, more reading just for fun that doesn't necessarily relate to a class or school in general. And then after that, we also are beginning to work with Paxson. Do you wanna talk a little bit about that, Faith, since that's your specific project?
Sure, yeah. So for Paxson, we wanna partner with some elementary schools that feed directly into our high school, and that starts, you know, with the elementary schools, and Paxson was willing to work with us. So we're gonna try to have a big brother, big sister program so that they can help with reading, any homework they might need help with. We have a pretty strong Spanish program, so that's an area of concentration for sure.
We are also working on a gift registry program, specifically gift cards, in hopes that families are able to use them in many different ways throughout this holiday season, and teachers are able to nominate different students.
And then for some miscellaneous business, we're having hosts a week so that more of our students can become attentive to their health throughout this week, and then we're also having a way for more clubs to get registered with grad cords for graduation in June.
And then finally, just to wrap up our goals as we like continue throughout this school year, is we hope to introduce Class Cup in January slash like February. Since we won't be participating in the GOAT game this year, we just hope to still like increase that student involvement. And then we also are working on getting a school mascot, which has been a really exciting project that has allowed like a lot of different grade levels to work together in student government.
And then finally, we're gonna have some murals hopefully up in our school to increase or encourage more of our arts. And then we're also working on a Salish language project that's headed by our sophomore class representatives. Thank you.
Okay, next is Sealy Swan High School.
Hi, my name is Reagan Jones. I hope you guys can hear me all right. Thank you so much for having me. I'm gonna briefly talk about sports and a little bit about our clubs. So the Sealy Swan Girls Volleyball Team competed in districts about two weekends ago where they placed fourth and earned their tickets to divisionals. This was the first year the districts thirteen and fourteen combined to form a super district consisting of twelve teams. The Lady Blackhawks then traveled to Manhattan Christian this past weekend to compete, to compete in divisionals, where they tied with the Drum and Lady Trojans for fifth. Twenty, two thousand and twenty-two is the last time the Lady Blackhawks went to divisionals. The Sealy Swan Boys Football Team also went to the playoffs, where they faced off against Shoto. Unfortunately, the Blackhawks lost, but this was a huge accomplishment for our football team, since this was the last time that they went to playoffs since two thousand and seven. We also have our basketball, which starts November twenty-first, and the teams traveled to Hamilton and Manhattan Christian to compete in pre-tournaments for the first two weekends of December. So a lot of exciting stuff coming up. And then briefly about our clubs, the Leos Club has been very active in the community. Most recently, they helped with the senior center with their Hunter's Breakfast and filling sandbags for the community members. The Leos are now planning their annual turkey drive for later this month, and all the proceeds go to our local food bank. Student Council also just hosted a Halloween costume contest, which brings a lot of joy and excitement into the school. They handed out prizes for the winners in three categories, which were funniest, best duo, and overall best costume. The winners received ten-dollar gift cards to our local coffee shop and got featured on our local newspaper, The Pathfinder. So overall, a really exciting Halloween weekend. Thank you guys so much for having me.
All right, Sentinel High School.
Sentinel has a super great life skills program, and are, they focus on survival skills for after-high school, and then grocery shopping, hygiene, budgeting, and other things like that. Like this past weekend, they went to Helena for a tournament, and we took a five-on-five unified basketball team, as long as a three-on-three team and an individual skills category. The trip was full of great events, such as a team dine-out, game night, carnival, and a dance, and it gave our students the opportunity to meet people from all over the state that they otherwise would not know. This was our first unified team, so that was a super big deal, and we're looking forward to continuing that in the future. Another thing is our speech and debate team is off to a super-strong start. We had a meet a couple weeks ago in Kalispell, and then we also are hosting here November fifteenth and sixteenth. So if anyone is interested in judging that, please contact Sentinel, Sentinel's main office. Our World Affairs Club has about forty members, and they just got back from a two-day EconoQuest competition in Bozeman. They won the Best of Industry Award, Energy and Extractives, Tourism, Best Research, and Entrepreneur Awards. So we're super like proud of them. And then kinda moving on to theater and arts, our theater has Treasure Island coming up November twenty-first through twenty-third. There's about seventy students in this production, and just from talking to them, they've said that it's a super-warming environment and that there feels to be like a family created within that group. They were able to collect seven hundred and eighty pounds of non-perishable food items on Halloween that was donated to the Missoula Food Bank. Kinda going along with that and more art things, our all-star band was at the UM this past weekend, and choir attended a double-A music festival in Helena yesterday and today. Our volleyball teams, our volleyball team is entering the state tournament Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday as the second seed for the West, and our girls soccer made it to the semifinals, making them one of the top teams in the state. Our boys soccer and football made it to the corner finals as well. We took fourteen students to the MHSA Leadership Conference called Aim Higher. The students were chosen by both coaches and advisors, which helped train them to become better leaders and captains and just overall members of the school. We're super excited to continue this process in the future. And then lastly, our student government and other like students and clubs around the school go to Lewis and Clark and/or Russell frequently, and they have a couple different mentorships, so there's like an opportunity to go and play on the playground with students. There's also classroom tutoring and reading, which has been a super-great way for the Sentinel students to be involved in the community.
Willard High School.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Iris Polarity. Willard graduated their first class of the school year. We had fourteen new students join us for the, for the second quarter. We are also rolling out some new classes for the quarter, including a math-based cooking, baking class, a stretching and relaxation class, and a three-D printing and art marketing class. School staff continue to work with local courts to create MIP diversion programs for the students. Staff are also meeting with local licensed addiction counselors to discuss curriculum and supports related to our substance recovery program. Um, let's see. Willard recent, excuse me. Willard recently received their espresso machine and other accessories from Drum Coffee and are working on a barista training program with Drum. We hope to have the machine up and running after Thanksgiving break. We are also working with Dolly's Meats to cook a holiday meal for families and host a student-run holiday craft fair, which, that's still undetermined on the date and time, but, yeah. And the pumpkin carving with the second graders from Franklin also went very well, and students are planning on creating an event to make holiday decorations and ornaments with students sometime between Thanksgiving and holiday break. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your student trustee reports. We appreciate them very much. Next up is announcements from Superintendent Hill.
All right, buckle up. I've got a few announcements. First, I would like to introduce you to Jennifer Savage. If you don't know Jennifer, she is our new communication specialist, and so we're excited to have her on board with us, and this is her first go at a board meeting with public comment, and so if you get a chance to introduce yourself, please do and know that she's here to support the district, so. Also, I'm not sure if all the trustees are aware, but Trustee Wallach has resigned from the board, and due to movement, so he moved from the district that he was in into a different district, but he did say that if an opportunity ever arose to rejoin the board, he would certainly consider that. So we're grateful for his service and commitment to our board and to our community. Quick reminder about our three-on-one meetings this week. Hopefully you can all attend. I have some really interesting topics to cover, and if, that's, that's all I'm gonna say, they're gonna be interesting, but it's, so if one of the times or dates doesn't work, check with Tracy, and we can see if we can move some things around and see if we can accommodate that. Pat and I, this last week, met with some county officials in some other school districts regarding the newly-created Targeted Economic Development District at the Y. It's an interesting mix of organizations. State law recently changed that required county or city in the creation of TED or TEF districts to meet with the taxing jurisdictions that reside within those districts. And so DeSmet Elementary, Helgate Elementary, French Town, and the Missoula High School District are all encompassed inside of that geographic area. So we learned some things, and we were also able to share some things. My team, Amy, Vinnie, myself, are meeting with representatives from the city and from the Center for Restorative Youth Justice to look at diversion programming for Missoula youth to hopefully move away from the criminal justice system into something a little more proactive and to reduce recidivism in students who are involved in the legal system. Last week, we had a visit from the Board of Public Ed's executive director and one of their staff members to visit Teach Academy and Connect Academy. So they sat in on some classes on our online school, and then we also toured Teach Academy at Jefferson, and then we had a little roundtable discussion about highlights and opportunities as we have rolled out and grown our charter schools. And then also last week, we had a variance to a standard approved by the Board of Public Ed, and that is in relation to, so a standard is something that we're measured against for accreditation, and so we have things like classroom sizes, counselor, FTE, librarian, et cetera. And so we actually don't have librarians at either Teach or Connect. We use the Bookmobile and the City Library to provide library services for Teach Academy and then Connect. We actually use online library resources and our, our own librarians from the high schools to support in that, but we, because it's a variance to the, the standard says you have to have it, because it's a variance, we have to put in an application, and so that was approved this last week. Safety update. So tomorrow, we have twenty staff, including admin, counselors, behavior interventionists, school psychs, who are participating in a national threat assessment training that is being sponsored by the MSGIA, which is our workman's comp provider, which is under the umbrella of MTSBA. I'm gonna throw out a few more acronyms. Anyways, we, we were contacted and asked if we would be one of the host sites. There were four of them across the state, and we said yes, and so Secure Education Consultants who works school safety across the nation is bringing in the trainer for that. Vinnie and I just returned late this last week from a Train the Trainer workshop and conference for the I Love You Guys Foundation, and this was specifically geared towards our standard response protocol to critical incidents, and then also a reunification, a standard reunification protocol. It was, it was an interesting training. The, the two people who led the training, one was the father of a girl who was killed in an act of school violence, and before she was killed, she had texted, "I love you guys," and hence the name of the foundation. And the other person was the, was a law enforcement officer who was the, what's the word I'm looking for? The hostage negotiator. So had a really interesting lens on school safety and response, but I Love You Guys has been around for, since two thousand, I wanna say nine, and they are serving and being implemented by not just school districts, but also by law enforcement and emergency response. And, you know, their mission, their goal is that everybody across the world is having the same type of responses, but, so we were fortunate to go to that. And then I just wanted to update our board regarding our elementary safety levy and how those funds are currently being expended, and not shockingly, and in keeping with our declared uses, the majority, eighty-three percent of the one and a half million, is paying for the salary and benefits of staffing at our elementary schools. One million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars is being spent on behavior interventionists, counselors, social workers, police, and administration. Approximately four hundred and twenty thousand of those costs are offsetting what were once general fund expenditures, and then keeping in mind that the, the cost for the behavior interventionists, that was paid for entirely out of Esser, and so when Esser went away, those positions were going to go away. And so the remaining two hundred and fifty-six thousand is being used to pay for infrastructure-related costs, which is cameras, software systems, doors, windows, fencing, and other kind of whatever I refer to as hard-sided security features in our schools, along with paying for staff training and professional development in our security operations, so. And then the last thing, I had the opportunity to go to Sealy to watch the football game, even though it was a losing effort. It was great to be there and be with that community as they celebrated hosting a playoff game for the first time in thirty years, even though it was a loss. Also got to watch Big Sky's win, which was great, over Billings, and attended Willard's graduation a couple weeks ago, so. Just a lot going on. That's my update.
All right, so next up, we'll move to the consent agendas. There is no board discussion for consent agenda items, as these are routine items. We'll have two motions, an elementary and a high school.
I had a question.
Oh, no, we're not doing questions during that. We kinda strayed away from it the last time, and we got back on. Okay, now let me go back. Sorry.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. There is no board discussion for consent agenda items, as these are routine items. There'll be two motions, an elementary motion and a high school motion. First up is their elementary motion to approve the consent agenda items. Moved by Vice Chair of Garris, second by Trustee Witt. There is no board discussion. Any public comment? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous, trustee, which are unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is our high school motion to approve the consent agenda items. Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by Vice Chair F. Garris. There is no board discussion. Any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the high school consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is number nine, which is old business, and first up is to approve the second reading of revised board policy, five-two-five-zero, conclusion of employment, and this is over to Superintendent Hill.
Yeah, this was a cleanup effort in our policy, where we used to refer to executive regional directors and director of personnel. Those titles have changed, and so this is just a matter, is just pretty much cleanup language in that policy.
Any trustee questions? CNN, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the second reading? Moved by Vice Chair of Garris, second by Trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comments? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the second reading, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up, number ten is new business, and first item up is the Innovation Education Program Tax Credit, and this is over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. This is something that, that we're familiar with. It's a creature of board or of state law. It was, arose out of some legislation in two thousand and twenty-one. What it provides for is a dollar-for-dollar tax credit for donations to public schools in support of innovation transformational learning programs. So that bulleted list is, is identified in the flyer that's attached, and so best way to describe it is, is this, this year in two thousand and twenty-four, we received about three hundred thousand dollars in donations by the, beginning on the, the, the date that the donations were allowed is January of, of two thousand and twenty-four. Those donors, when they file their state income tax in April or after the first of the year, they'll take a credit equal to that contribution against their state income taxes. So it's a dollar-for-dollar credit. So at the end of the day, those donors of three hundred thousand directed what would otherwise have been state income tax to go instead to, to our school district. So the, the state, because the, the aggregate tax- So the state, because the aggregate tax credit was used of $5 million last year, they boosted it by 20% to $6 million this year. So statewide, it's a $6 million threshold. The date for kickoff is January 15th. That's when we can start entering donations that are identified on the form. There's a fillable form attached to the agenda. Each taxpayer, individual, or corporation can donate up to $200,000, and married couple can be $400,000. So it's sizable contributions and donations. The action item has just authorized us to set up our account, really, with the Department of Revenue. And we'll use the opportunity to provide information to the community between now and January date about the availability of this tax credit. And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Trustee Walsh.
Okay, so I've tried to talk about this to people, and it's just confusion back and forth.
Yeah.
So just for some clarity, so if I wanted to do this, am I cutting a check to the district ever? Or so it would be, I would cut a check to the district?
Yep.
And then I wouldn't have my taxes go to the state for the money that I gave to the district?
What's different about it is you would write the check in January of 2025, and it wouldn't be applied as a credit against your return until you filed your 2025 tax return in 2026. So you're essentially, you're making a payment during the 2025 calendar year to the district, and you won't realize the offsetting credit until you file your tax return for that year.
So would this be better for someone who is like a 1099 taxpayer versus a W-2 taxpayer?
No, not necessarily. It's any state income tax, and so it's anyone who files a state income tax could benefit from it. And so if you have a tax preparer and you know what you're paying in state income tax for the calendar year 2024, then you can make that, use that as an estimate to make that donation in 2025. And that's just assuming that you're paying the same amount of state income tax. And if you paid that state income tax during the year through withholdings, when you file your Montana state income tax return, then that donation to the school district will operate as a credit against what you've paid and what you owe. So that's where you would, you know, realize the benefit of the credit. So the commitment by a donor or by taxpayer is that you realize the benefit the following year, the year following the donation?
I'm a simple guy. Like, I just listen to you, Pat, and I'm like, huh? But I understand it. The way that I like to think about it is, you write me a check, you write the school district a check, and I'll just use an arbitrary number, $5,000. We take that check, we deposit it in our account, we give you our receipt. And when your taxes come due in the following year, you submit that receipt to the Department of Revenue. You're going to continue to pay in income tax all throughout the year, but you're going to get a refund, basically, for that tax that you paid in advance. And so that's what the dollar-for-dollar tax credit is. And that's the thing I think that people are trying to, like, wrap their head around. But you basically are paying your income tax in advance, and then you'll be credited that when your total taxes come due.
Trustee Witcher, then Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
What did we end up deciding to do with last year's?
So part of it is we're using for the MEF with the innovative teacher grants. We have, yep, and we have, Vinnie and Amy both also have an allocation out of that. You know, as we were, in one of our board meetings last year, we had a science teacher come and talk about a grant, like, right, the $2,000, and we're trying to buy this piece of equipment, and it's really cool, and we're working with the university, we've got a little bit of grant money, and we're trying... This would be like the ideal opportunity. And so being able to see something that's going on in our classrooms that's innovative, that meets this definition, and we say, aha, that's what we want to do. There is some limit to being able to say, well, I want to direct this towards a specific program or a specific need in the district. So someone could say, I want to donate the $10,000, but I really want to make sure that this is going towards assistive technology devices for students in special education. So it could be something like that as well. But for the most part, we have large discretion about where we want to put those resources.
Another thing I wanted to say to you is that a lot of people are confused because they think tax deductions, and it's not a deduction. It's a one-for-one refund on what you put out ahead of time.
Yep, Trustee Walsh.
Is this... Could a business direct... Okay, so we could talk to businesses who might have the capital laying around?
Definitely.
Okay, excellent.
Vice Chair F. Garris.
Just to be completely clear, this is for tax year 2025. Tax year 2024 was the last filing.
That's correct. What's different this year, too, you'll see in the attachment, is that they're allowing expenditures for capital and equipment, capital improvements and equipment. And I think what Micah pointed out in terms of assistive devices for students with disabilities or special education students is really worth noting. That's definitely an expenditure area where you don't plan for until a student arrives. And so it's equipment, it's devices that you need to purchase, but you don't necessarily have a funding source at the moment.
This is a full board motion. Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
I just want to say another thing, because this has been one of my pet things. There's not many states that allow you to give money to public schools, and I looked, and Arizona does allow that, but the limit is $400. Whereas here, we're talking $200,000 for a person.
Again, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair F. Garris, second by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any final trustee comments? I think Arlene already gave her comment. Not seeing any public comment. Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is the multi-district participation agreement, and this is over to you, Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So our unemployment insurance is provided through the MTSUIP, another acronym, Montana Schools Unemployment Insurance Program. It's also part of the MTSBA. We've been a part of that program for as long as I can remember, probably since inception of the program. There's really two ways to purchase unemployment insurance in the state, the state plan or this plan for school districts. It's self-funded, limited to school districts. So the document that's attached is a multi-district agreement, and so this is the solution as part of the bylaws for a membership agreement. And so multi-district agreements allow governmental agencies to sign an agreement, which we do with between our two districts. And here, the agreement is among all the members of the plan and the plan or the program. And so it really doesn't change any transactional approach with the program, how we pay the program. How it... What it does is it incorporates within that document what would otherwise appear in a membership agreement, which includes some of the commitments you'll see within the agreement for providing information, participation in MTSBA and MasBO. And I think really what it's getting at for member groups is ensuring that participation comes with an expectation of members that they help the organization when there are claims and that they respond in a timely manner. And I think how that benefits us is that we do timely respond, and we are a good member, and it holds others accountable to do the same.
Any trustee questions? Seeing none, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair F. Garris, second by Trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is personnel negotiations. First up is to approve the personnel report, and this is over to you, Mr. Robowski.
Thank you. Pretty standard report, nothing of note.
Any questions from a trustee? Seeing none, this is... We'll do two recommendations. First one is the elementary. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the personnel report? Moved by Vice Chair F. Garris, second by Trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the elementary personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is their high school motion to approve the personnel report. Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by Vice Chair F. Garris. Any trustee comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve... I can't even say it. The Adigious Lifeways Fund Grant Application. Over to you, Mr. McHugh, and you can say it.
All right, thanks. Yeah, so this is a fun one. This is a grant application request by the Native American Student Services Department and its director, Billy Joe Juno. It's the Na Ali Fund, and I had to watch a YouTube video to learn the pronunciation. But the intent of the application is to obtain some funds for purchasing supplies and materials to provide for families and students to make dance regalia and also to make drums. And the use is also really intended to familiarize students with the culture that's associated with the dance. And what Billy Joe had mentioned to me is that there are 76 tribes in Missoula County, and even though there are different tribes, all tribes have powwows, so there's common language. And so this will be useful for family engagement and provide cultural knowledge for our students. The funds would also support elders and other folks coming in to work with the students. And I think Shaun Whitegrass, one of our Native American Support Service specialists, is already working with kids on making drums, so it's a pretty cool process and progress.
Any trustee questions? Seeing none. This is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the grant application? Moved by Vice Chair F. Garris, second by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any final trustee comments? I have a comment, and I liked your pronunciation. I wonder what tribe it is. I would have gave it a shot if I knew what tribe. But I really think this is a really great way for us to really work with our Native American community, and I'm really excited at the steps that the Native American Student Services Department is going. And I always hear great things about them being in the schools. And I do think that when we looked at our budgets, you did mention that was one of the departments you wanted to really focus on, and I think that has been seen in our community and the Native community. So I just think that this is like just another great way for us to move forward with that specific group. So any public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the grant application, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up, number 11 is Board of Trustees, and it's to approve Resolution 2025-3, and there will be two motions, an elementary and a high school. But first up is, it's over to you, Mr. McHugh.
I can do this.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, it has you, Pat, so I just went with you.
I try to pass things off, and then when he doesn't want them, he just like right back to me. Just kidding. Just kidding. Yeah, so in front of the board tonight is a resolution that is being considered by most, if not all, the AA school districts. This is a legislative year, and as we know, legislative years have an impact on schools because this is where they decide what the funding will be for the next couple of years. And there's been a lot of work, a lot of conversation, lots of things happening at a state level around taxes, property taxes, the conversation around inflation. When we look at the work that MTSBA has done, they've calculated that we're 10% behind in our budgets just on inflationary increases because it was capped at 3%. We also know that we're coming to a decennial study, which is every 10 years, the legislature has to take a look at school funding and whether or not it's meeting the constitutional mandate. And so this is really a resolution by the board that we would submit and that we would release as a press release where we are saying we want our state legislature to take action to adequately support funding public schools in Montana.
And we'll take, we'll move into a board discussion, so if anybody wants to go ahead and start it, feel free to just let me know, or if there's any questions in regards to this resolution. Trustee Walsh.
During the legislative session at our meetings, could we have a section that's like legislative updates, or could we stay abreast?
Absolutely. And what you're going to see coming from MTSBA is a deluge of emails and updates and information. It could take a considerable amount of time at board meetings. I would say that the information's there, and then if there are some that I want to specifically highlight, I would certainly do that, but I think funding is going to certainly be one of those ones that we would be highlighting.
Any other trustee? Trustee Witcher?
I give this a rousing heck yeah. Let's go.
Any other trustees? Are we ready to move forward with some motions? All right, seeing no other trustee for discussion, so is there an elementary board motion to approve the resolution? Moved by Vice Chair F. Garris. Is there a second? Oh, Trustee Walsh, sorry. All right, any final trustee comments? In my comment, I agree with Trustee Witcher. Ditto. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, all trustees in favor, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is their high school board motion to approve the resolution. Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by Vice Chair F. Garris. Any final trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the high school board resolution, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is the Montana School Board Association update, and this is over to you, Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Okay, I hope everybody's looked in their mailboxes recently, but there's a brochure in there that was distributed at the Mcel Conference about a survey that I'll mention. And I'm only going to give about a dozen numbers, not 76, okay? This is a survey that has actually been going on for 15 years, and they survey likely voters in the state. And I think if you look at what I have here is the breakout of the number of Republicans, Democrats, and independents, and it is definitely representative of the number of people who have signed up to be one of those individuals. The survey is basically overseen by MTSBA, but it's also in conjunction with more acronyms, the Quality Educators, the Rural Education Association, school business officials, and school administrators. So I'm just going to give you some of the numbers. 75% of the respondents said that the local school boards, coupled with the State Board of Education, should have the most authority to determine how public schools are operated. So they had a choice, picking different groups. Three-quarters of the participants want elected officials who support increased funding for K-12 public education, and 74% support elected officials who call for improvement and innovation in public education. who call for improvement and innovation in public education. The individuals who are asked, what are the following areas should have the highest priority when you allocate tax dollars? Education was number one, and public health was number two. Together, they're about seventy-five percent topping the list. The respondents also said it's important that school board members be nonpartisan, seventy-six percent agreement. And only eight, no, sixteen percent said they would support elected officials who suggest that taxpayer dollars fund private school alternatives to public education. I just wanted to mention that ninety-three percent of the students in Montana are enrolled in public schools. So it's important to hear Montanans' voices. Last year, seventy-six percent of respondents said that state-funded public preschool was important, which had gone up over the last couple of years, had gone up by seven percent over five years ago. And then you see that we had the early literacy programs come out about that. So I think it's an important survey for legislators to see as well. Eighty-three percent of the respondents continued the call for a well-rounded curriculum, which should include early childhood education, beginning at age four, gifted and talented, music, art, phys ed, technology, career and technical education, and advanced placement, rather than the core curriculum, back-to-the-basics-only kind of curriculum. They trust teachers, local boards, and the State Board of Education to make curricular choices, seventy-three percent, ahead of the state superintendent, five-point-one percent, the governor, three percent, or the legislature, point-six percent. They ask that boards ensure socially and emotionally supportive classrooms, eighty-six percent of the respondents. Safety, as you might expect, ninety-five percent. Collaboration, ninety-one percent. Equity, eighty-six percent. And academically excellent schools at only ninety-two percent. I don't know who doesn't want academically excellent schools, but, okay. So basically, Montanans still rate their local public schools highly. They understood the vital role that we play. They support the school where their children go. They know what happens in the classroom, they know the teachers, and they strongly support neighborhood schools. So those are the results.
And this is information only, but are there any questions or comments by any trustees? Seeing none, any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. The time is now seven oh seven, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.